Would the meeting please come back to order? Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Oyster River School Board. And would you please join us for the pledge of allegiance? And we just signify, of the United States of America, and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if there is anybody in the public wishing to address us, now is the time.
Last week I made a public comment and someone stole my seat.
Did that your public comment?
Yes, I want to register a formal. I'm Dean Rubine from Lee. I'm glad the superintendent's back because I'm basically going to make the same comment as two weeks ago. Now they'll hear me. First, I've been staring at the enrollment predictions for a long time and the really easy way to understand them is to just realize the numbers are low in first grade and kindergarten and below. And that's just like a low wave that is going to run through all the schools. I guess I don't know how long it's going to last, but the prediction is it's going to last and it's in eight years it'll hit high school. But until then, the high school numbers will not be below what they are now, at least as forecasted. So, you know, we don't really have to do anything if our worry is the size of the high school and we think it's okay right now. I want to complain a little bit about the proposed budget for the tuition students. Originally, I thought it was pretty good because it was 15 to 20 staff for 290 tuition students. But when I think about that, I think it's really 209 tuition students because we already had 81. And so when I think of 15 to 20 for 209, it doesn't sound quite as lean as I would hope. And then, you know, then there's, well, there's all this talk about using this extra money, the difference between the tuition and how much it costs for those people and their programs to expand programs, football or all-day kindergarten. And I want to put on a plug on behalf of the taxpayers to hopefully try to restrain yourself from using this money for spending spree and try to give the taxpayers a break with it. I think I'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Take my seat.
Good evening. Krista Wetzle. Dean's causing a commotion so that doesn't come into my five minutes. As a parent of both an ORYA football player and a 2014 kindergartner, I've come tonight to speak about self-sustaining programs. I urge the board that when considering a self-sustaining program, they are all considered equally, both for financials and for students, fairly and for the purpose that is tied to the program specifically. For example, tuition costs for the kindergarten program should fund kindergarten and only kindergarten, the cost of the teachers, supplies, space, et cetera. In my opinion, that does not include the costs of an addition to an elementary school that the district has failed to plan for in previous years, and half those students will never get the benefit of using. It should be considered from all angles, including full day versus half day, curriculum standards, transportation, sped versus regular ed, need and cost of this program versus similar programs in our district like PEP or in neighboring communities where tuition kindergarten is also offered. Finally, decisions should be made in an efficient and helpful manner that can fulfill promises, perceived or actual, to parents for their upcoming kindergarteners. Full-day kindergarten is a big step for our district, but one that is, that parents and teachers have demonstrated the desire for and one that will better help this district fulfill the requirements of the core curriculum standards. I appreciate the administration approaching this subject and look forward to your discussion on it. Now on to my second topic, football. Football should fund the football program and its needs. It should be considered as other sports are considered, like hockey and lacrosse, both full contact sports that ORHS already offers, provided there is interest, which your student rep who's not here yet has already told you that there is. The program, lost my place, sorry. If the program cannot fund itself, find space for practices or games, or maintain practice as participants, it will fold. It is a lot easier to have these discussions with an approved program and not some hypothetical, maybe the board will approve our program. Safety, finances, and needs should also be compared to what we already currently offer in athletics. Thank you for your time. Good luck with your discussions and as always, thank you for serving.
Thank you, Krista. Anybody else? Okay. Superintendent Sachens.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first action that I would ask the board to consider is a motion to authorize me to offer contracts during the summer months. We have really great candidates that will be interviewed very shortly that we haven't filled positions for. Guidance, for example, will be open. And if we wait for confirmation by the school board in the one meeting we have in July or the one meeting, official meeting we have in August, then it's possible that we would lose candidates to other school systems who allow their superintendents this authority. It is a power that other school districts I work for have, has provided me. And what I do is I bring the names back to the board for affirmation as opposed to a vote so that you know who's been hired and their credentials and so forth. The danger is without this authority, we would lose great candidates to other school systems.
Al.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the superintendent to offer contracts to qualified teacher and staff during the summer months.
Moved by Al, seconded by Ann. Discussion?
I have a question. Could you tell us what positions those would include?
Right now, let's see, what's opened is we have, we'll have two guidance positions that we'll be interviewing for in the second week of July, where the process of screening those, we've advertised, and we'll be screening those applications between now and then. That's what comes to my head really quickly.
Is that in the high school?
We have Catherine, a-
School psychologist position at Masway and a special education teacher position at the middle school.
And a science teacher.
Thanks, Todd. And a science teacher at the high school.
The two guidance positions, where are they?
Right here at the high school.
Further discussion? Hearing none, could we have a show of hands, please? Seven in the affirmative, motion carries.
Thank you. And along those same lines, since we are in a meeting, I would like to move that we appoint a second grade teacher for the Masway School, Heather McConnell. She is the first candidate that was, the top candidate that was nominated. Carolyn and Carrie ultimately screened to Heather. They're pretty excited about bringing Heather on board and I would nominate her to you.
Fight it out, guys.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the second grade Masway teacher.
Moved by Al, seconded by Ann. Having read the minutes of the last meeting, I would really like to see the name as part of the motion.
Okay.
It is, it's in, Heather McConnell.
Discussion? Hearing none, could we have a show of hands, please? Seven in the affirmative, motion carries.
In addition, I'd like the board to consider the nomination of a special education teacher for the high school, Samantha Meeker. Catherine and Todd, again, with a crew of staff, came to the conclusion that Samantha would be the best nominee for this position and I recommend her to you.
What's her last name?
Meeker.
Meeker, M-E-E-K-E-R.
Al.
I'd like to make a motion to accept Samantha Meeker as the high school special education teacher.
Moved by Al, seconded by Ann. Discussion, seeing none, could we have a roll call, please? Or show of hands, sorry. Seven in the affirmative, motion carries.
Continuing, we have the, I'm requesting a motion to approve the resignation of high school science teacher who's accepted a position in Maine.
Ann.
I make a motion to accept with regret the resignation of the high school science teacher, Mr. Michael Massey.
And that's seconded by, moved by Ann, seconded by Al. Discussion, seeing none, could we have a show of hands, please? Seven in the affirmative.
And then finally, in terms of resignations this evening, we do have the resignation of a 14-year veteran guidance counselor, Oyster River High School. Opportunity has, remember which one it is, there's two of them. I'll leave it there. No, I'll leave it as the resignation of a 14-year veteran. We will, we will miss her. She's done a great job for the high school in her 14 years and for personal reasons. That's what I was trying to get to. She needs to leave.
Ann.
Make a motion to accept the resignation of Lisa Emrich, a 14-year veteran of Lee High School's guidance department with regret.
What's her last name? I'm sorry.
E-M.
R-I-C-H.
M. Rich.
E-M-R-I-C-H.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And that was seconded by Al. Discussion, hearing none, could we have a show of hands, please? Seven in the affirmative, motion carries.
Which brings us to a motion to approve a list of attached policies. We have several first reads, several second read, and then two to delete.
Tom.
I'd like to make a motion to approve as a slate the policies for a first read. That would be CHCA, KA, KDA, KDCA. And we talked in our agenda meeting that if someone wants to have a policy individually discussed, I would take that as a friendly amendment. Otherwise, we vote on them as a slate.
Moved by Tom, seconded by Al. Any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a show of hands, please? Seven in the affirmative, motion carries.
I'd like to move as a slate the policies for second read and adoption. Those would be policies DJ, DJ dash R, DJ dash R1, DH, DJC, and DKC. So if anybody again would want to discuss any of those individually, you know, we could separate those out.
And that was seconded by Al. Discussion, seeing none, could we have a show of hands, please? Seven in the affirmative, motion carries.
Well, I'm going to roll.
Yes, you are.
I'd like to move as a slate that we delete policies DFEA and KBBB.
And that was seconded by Ann. Discussion, hearing none, could we have a show of hands, please? Seven in the affirmative, motion carries.
The next motion that I would ask the board to consider is approval or withdrawal from the scholarship trust fund. And if you would like an explanation, I'd ask our business manager to step to the podium and talk about the process and why we require a vote.
This is a standard motion, you do it every year. It's just the approval to withdraw the funds from the trustee, the trust funds to honor the scholarships that were awarded at graduation.
Have they been awarded already?
No, the checks probably, in some cases, yes, but I don't believe all of them have been, no. Some of them actually go to the institutions, so they don't directly go to the students in all cases, but.
Okay. Al.
I'd like to make a motion to withdraw $14,750 from the trust fund. Fourteen seven fifty.
And is there a second? And that was seconded by Kenny. Discussion, hearing none, could we have a roll call? Could we have a show of hands, please? Seven in the affirmative, motion carries. And you don't get to leave until you have signed this.
And then carrying on the board's business, the appointment of sustainability committee members, John Carroll as the UNH representative, Barry Kaplan as the Medbury representative, and Shelley Mitchell as the Durham representative, alternative.
Al.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate or to accept John Carroll, Barry Kaplan, and Shelley Mitchell for the sustainability committee.
And is there a second? Seconded by Ken. Discussion, hearing none, could we have a show of hands, please? Seven in the affirmative, motion carries.
And Madam Chair, if I could just inject, since this is a logical place to do it, for the community, anybody who's interested in serving on the advisory budget committee, we still have three openings. We've advertised in newsletters, we put it in the Friday update. So if there's anybody who has that kind of tendency to want to help the district develop and analyze its school budget in the upcoming year, we'd appreciate someone stepping, three someone stepping forward.
Thank you. District reports. And if there is no objection, I would suggest we move E up front, the football.
The board directed me to direct the formation of a superintendent committee to investigate whether football would be feasible for the upcoming school year. I'm going to invite Todd Allen and Corey Parker, our principal and athletic director forward. They've been meeting regularly with the committee to get to this place tonight where they could provide a report and a recommendation. So, gentlemen.
Thank you. Just a moment to get to the PowerPoint slides. Okay, I'd like, first of all, I'd like to start out by just thanking the participants in the, this football study committee. Corey and I felt very good that we have, had a really good cross-section of perspectives from the community on the committee. We had, obviously, Corey and myself. We also had Mike Gamache from ORYA. We had Lorna Jacobson, a parent who has been involved in a couple of others, not entirely self-funded sporting events as a parent over the years, but ski, ski club and lacrosse. She certainly had some experience in that area. We had Rob McEwen from the advisory budget committee. We had Glenn Miller, who was one of the proponents of the football proposal. And we also had Jesse Morrell, who's an ORYA executive board member, who's got a longstanding history and connection to athletics in our community. We really had a great group of people. We had a lot of really lively discussion. We ended up meeting five times to get ourselves to the point that we felt that we had hashed out the issues enough that we had arrived at a conclusion. I'd like to start by just kind of reviewing what the charge that we were given was. And I think it's just, it's important that people understand that we were given the charge to basically evaluate the proposal that was presented on March 6th, based upon the criteria that are listed there. We looked at estimated costs, feasibility of self-funding, adequacy and availability of field space, safety issues, effects on other sports, including Title IX, basis of implementation, adherence to district policies, level of support from the student body, and a variety of other things that came up in the process. Ultimately, the recommendation which we're going to make tonight is based upon that notion of recommendation based on the proposal from March 6th. Let's all turn it over to Corey to kind of-
And as we go through the slides, we just went in order as the, as the charge presented itself. As you can see up there, the ORYA presentation on March 6th was, that was their estimated cost for the budget. After that meeting, I reached out to a local, many of the local high schools as well as local vendors for, excuse me, costs associated to football. And it should be in your packet this evening as well as there's, there's a more identi- you know, itemized items for there as well. But it essentially shows the startup costs, year-one costs, and then the annual expenses to it. The annual expense, significant gap between the two budgets was the actual trainer expense that when you break it in, it did have $9,800, which was not included on their proposal on March 6th. So outside of the initial startup costs, that was again something that ORYA had expressed they would find a way to fund. Our budgets were very close when you take the trainer piece out of the conversation. So it wasn't as significantly different as initially predicted. But again, once you start breaking down the expenses, we were actually fairly close in the two. The next slide was feasibility of self-funding. So within this, within the committee, we looked, explored a lot of different items associated to that and through dialogue with the proposal from ORYA as well as conversations through the committee, we identified a couple of key bullet points that really would come into play when, when it comes to feasibility of self-funding. Obviously, sponsors, which was presented that evening, which had been verified at a later date, that had come forward expressing interest to fund startup costs and continue the process moving forward. Pay-to-play is something that we are currently doing within three of our programs. The ski team pays $250 a year. The girls' hockey program paid $320 this year. And the boys' hockey program, prior to fundraising, has an ice practice cost of $700. So it is something that we, as a school district, we do have in some cases. It's a small sample, obviously, of our sports that we don't. But all of those expenses are at the expense of needing outdoor facilities for ice rental and Gunstock Mountain rental for meets and practices that also comes with a ski pass. And through our dialogues, again, ORYA did express interest and continue to express interest in the startup costs. So we definitely spoke on that and reflected on the startup cost, which was a significant high number north of $20,000 to get this process going. Some ideas that we did discuss in looking at exploring some of the options was the, obviously, the clear revenue streams that was discussed, and we'll talk about that a little more when it comes to facilities. But a large piece of that from a self-funding piece was obviously the generation of revenue through the process. And one large line item that was talked about was concessions. And after a dialogue with UNH, that was something that we would not have access to if we're using UNH facility, as they have first right to that. We do not get concessions currently when we use the Winnebago Center for hockey games as well. Obviously, with self-funding, we recognize that this could increase competition with groups that are already fundraising in our community, reaching out to local businesses. But on the positive side, certainly, football could increase our area of marketing and area of groups wanting to reach out to help support it financially through the programs, which as we had discussed, Ecos Mazda had reached out. Through anything I had found, we had never found any sponsorship from that group. So I think it is important to note as well that starting a new program that, as popular as football, does generate interest from maybe some sources of funding that isn't explored necessarily right now with our current programs. Aqueacity and availability of facilities was something we explored for a while. One way we did look at this is certainly exploring our current state of our facilities. And I think it was important that we had to look at it that way, given the charge and how it was presented to us. Exploring our current state for our fall sports, the entire grounds out behind the high school are used until dark every day with our current fall teams. So in order to add a program of football, if indeed we're doing it on our site, we would have to drastically impact our current situation with our teams. So certainly, off-site practice facilities would be needed in some aspect, not necessarily just for football, but the reality of needing more grass space for our teams to practice and go through the normal functions of a varsity or junior varsity program. Off-site facilities is something that we would need to explore. In conversations that we had with UNH and their athletic director, Marty Scarono, he did specify that he would be more than willing to work with us and accommodate us as much as possible being in our district. However, he did make it clear, and I respect his opinion, that he has to obviously take care of his own programs first. And the growing push from a lot of their coaches are moving everything to Cal Stadium, which is something that their new soccer coach has requested as well. So through those conversations, it was a very conservative approach to being able to formulate any kind of long-term contract for a turf facility at UNH. Again, it was something that, he was adamant, he'd be willing to work with us in any capacity, but could not confirm any set schedule at this time.
Probably worth pointing out now too that Cowell Stadium is not equipped with lights, so it does, it does have a limiting effect in the fall in terms of the number of hours that you can use the facility. So the notion of like Friday night games is not an option at Cowell Stadium.
We, we had conversations with the town of Durham and Todd Selig's office about Woodridge and continuing to explore the conversations of utilizing that facility for practices. The initial conversations with the town was very hesitant because of the wear and tear with that field. Todd and I spoke again today, as I briefed him that we would be talking about this this evening. And similar to UNH's approach was, he'd be more than willing to work with us, but again, there'd be a lot of dialogue and the public works piece about what the field would look like, because adding a varsity football program or high school age program to that facility could be a concern.
It's on the topic of fields, so I figured I'd ask it. The high school fields we have here, are they utilized before school?
Great question. They currently are not, not by any of our programs.
And is it not the case that football, there's going to be, for the younger kids, like middle school age, they're going to be using the towns, Durham Town Fields and Woodridge in the fall?
The current ORYA program?
Yeah, the, I guess, seventh, eighth graders, they're going to be using that. Okay.
Yeah, the feedback that Todd's office presented to us was that they're happy with their current state, but they are, have concerns about adding and increasing high school football to their facility.
So potentially, I mean, I don't, I know we start school very early, but if they really want football, maybe they'll practice before school.
As far as on our fields?
Yeah.
Currently, at our style, you mean? Yep. That is, that is an area that we did not explore before school practice.
Did your committee didn't look at those kinds of?
I don't recall before school practice, no.
Okay, just an idea.
Sure.
It's unusual, I know. Thank you.
We also reached out to local high schools, Dover, Portsmouth, and St. Thomas, about potentially securing those facilities as well. And again, no one said adamantly no. However, we would be second in line based off all their needs and their facility as far as their programs go. I know City of Portsmouth does operate their youth programs through their turf field that is at the high school, and hours of operation are very tight. And so there's, there's not a lot of room for outside groups. Another area that we did look at as far as the building goes for actual equipment and locker rooms and storage, I think it was clear-cut that we would have to improve that to some degree of what that would entail. We didn't necessarily go down that road, but recognizing again our current situation, our current facilities, there would definitely need to be improvements for that, simply for a matter of space. Because currently, we cannot, we can barely outfit our fall sports teams that currently exist in our locker rooms and for storage.
The next topic we looked at was safety concerns. And we spent a lot of time discussing it on a, more of a philosophical level in terms of, as we thought about, obviously, safety concerns in all sports are of concern to us all. Obviously, we want to, we want, we want our kids to have as safe an opportunity as they possibly can. And certainly, there are specific risks that are inherent to football that there, that- And certainly, there are specific risks that are inherent to football that are not in other sports. However, we felt it would be unfair to focus the safety issue on whether or not this program was something that we would recommend. We felt that that would be something that we needed to raise awareness in our community. And we needed, and that was true across the board, all sports, with the idea that ultimately, if, as a school community, we felt football was something we wanted to promote, that it would be up to individual families to make that decision, that we didn't think as a, as a committee, we felt that was something we wanted to be taking a stand on. We did talk about a number of specific things, however. Number one, you know, a football program would need to follow all of the same guidelines that all of our programs follow. First one is, you know, the NHIA rules. Specifically, one NHIA rule that's unique to football and not other sports is you have to have a trainer on-site all the time during practices and games. And certainly, that, as Corey pointed out, that creates, presents itself as a cost factor that makes some of the difference in the cost between the two proposals. Beyond that, we would expect a football program to follow all the same safety protocols that we have all athletes follow. We do impact testing. We have a trainer that assesses, you know, kids when they have injuries. And then obviously, when injuries come up, there's a, there's a process by which they go through in order to be cleared to return to action. So we clearly believe that's very important. We also believe that coaches' education is extremely important. Clearly, we would want all coaches that we hire, and regardless of whether it's football or not, to be well-versed in, you know, all the different risk factors and injuries and so forth for their particular sport, but also in general. And then really, our, the big thing that we felt we would recommend, and this is something I think we'll go forward with regardless of where this proposal ends up, is to increase our efforts to do more community awareness. We had a number of people suggest to us names of extremely well-respected medical professionals that we could have come in and do community forums. Dr. Brennan was one that actually spoke to our staff this year, and we talked at great length about concussion risks and that sort of thing. So clearly, that's something we feel is important. We didn't, however, feel it was appropriate to use that as a screen by which to determine whether football was something that we would recommend. This issue, the Title IX issue, actually has presented itself to us as a school district because of some other issues that we're in the process of dealing with. Without getting into all the specifics because it's something that is ongoing, we have had a Title IX complaint related to our hockey programs. And we are in the process of trying to resolve as amicably as possible that concern. And basically, the issue is the equity of facilities and access to opportunity for our female athletes to our male athletes. Clearly, at a time when we're going through an issue of that sort, it does pose with itself some potential legal and political pitfalls that make the consideration of a football program at this time something we really want to think very carefully about. We asked the lawyer that's representing us to kind of summarize for us what her thoughts were. First thing was, it's important to point out that right up front, the participation rates for boys over girls is slightly higher in our district already. And that is, by the way, in spite of the fact that we actually offer more girls teams than we do guys teams, we still have a higher rate of male sport participation than female participation. And participation rates is really something that, when you get down into a Title IX complaint, that's sort of like the beginning screen of what the Office of Civil Rights looks at to determine whether you're in balance or not. And if your, your participation numbers are significantly out of balance, it's like, once they see that, then they look at everything else in much more close scrutiny. And that's where you get into the questions about how many dollars you're spending and all that kind of thing. So basically, her opinion, which is the bottom quote there, "The purposes and benefits to boys and girls teams in this regard. It is important to note that for the purposes of Title IX analysis, the source of funds, i.e. whether they come directly from the school budget or from private sources, is not important, as the amount of benefits provided to the school-sponsored team." You know, basically, how I read that is creating a football program would be creating upwards of 40 opportunities for male athletes that would further, regardless of where the money came from, it still skews the balance of opportunity. And it's something that we should be concerned about as we ask ourselves. And again, this isn't specific to football, it's any athletic program, were we to consider adding it. Megan, yes?
I have a question about this particular topic. So how do other schools have football programs and deal with this potential issue?
Well, I mean, certainly, one of the first thing that they said to us when we started looking at this was, well, eliminate your boys golf team. That would, that would help solve the problem.
I have an idea of how to handle this. Why don't, why don't you add another girl's sport or another sport? What about like a gymnastics team or something like that?
Absolutely, you can add other programs, yes.
But you need the numbers, right?
Well, we haven't, I mean, was that explored in this committee about how we might offset that risk by adding in another sport that could potentially...
We actually are exploring that as a result of the OCR complaint we're dealing with.
I mean, part, I guess, I want to just, just clarify that as of, we're talking, as of June 19th, three months after the original proposal came forward, we've looked at all the issues. Are there ways that we could go about mitigating some of these things? Absolutely. But I, there's costs associated with that too. And again, it's, it's, it doesn't matter where the money comes from, it's a matter of providing opportunity. But you're absolutely right. If we offered cheerleading...
No, cheerleading you can't offer because it doesn't count under Office of Civil Rights. Cheerleading, although Maine and New Hampshire count cheerleading as a sport, the federal government does not. So cheerleading does nothing for us.
Reserve soccer, whereas JV softball.
But again...
Archery.
Absolutely. There are programs, there are definitely, there are definitely programs that could be added, but again, there is a cost factor associated with that. And again, I would emphasize that we looked at the charge, which was evaluate the proposal, not everything else. And it's, it's a big issue.
Yeah, fair enough. I just, I just felt like I wanted to ask that now because we're on that.
I appreciate that.
I look at this as, my responsibility as serving kids, prior to us developing our theater program, I'd be curious how many more females participated in sports as participate now? Because you have to make a choice, either I'm in the theater program and that's my, my sole pursuit, or I pick a varsity sport. I realize that's got nothing to do with Title IX, but as a community, we're responding to what our children want to do. We took years to respond to the theater request, years. It was absurd how long it took. And I find now that we're doing the same thing to a bunch of kids that are not engaged in perhaps any other way that is meaningful to them, and that football to them is theater to some other kids.
Sure.
And I think that's our responsibility. And while Title IX is gravely important, if it is fixed by either eliminating a sport where we have five or six kids playing versus 60, according to what Peter presented to us last week, or two weeks ago, whatever our meeting was, that to me is the issue, is are we responding to the demands of our, of our student body? And we can have all these conversations about Title IX, but I think that it's just a way of dodging the question.
We do have some theater kids that are 12-season athletes too, though. I do want to add that.
Well, let's, let's look before we had a theater program, how many kids were participating? Because there was nothing else for them to do.
Right. And I would just like to say that there are a number of programs that exist now that I'll be honest with you, had I been the principal at that time and asked about, I would have had serious reservations about starting them, only because of the balance that it has created. And we have other issues to resolve. So I guess, all I can say is, we're given the task of evaluating where we are right now. And Title IX, there are lots of issues with Title IX, but the reality is, they're very number-conscious, that is what, that's how they measure the balance. And given that we are in a position where we are being scrutinized, it would put us at more risk of being scrutinized farther and possibly hurting some of the existing programs we have in order to create something. And we wouldn't necessarily end up taking a positive step to add opportunities for our kids by doing that. And we'll get to the specifics of our recommendation when we get there. I don't want anybody to take from anything that we're saying tonight that we're anti-football, that we don't want to provide opportunities for kids, because that is not what we're trying to say. What, what we're trying to get across is there are some unanswered questions that require, it is frustrating, and I, and I agree with you. I wish it were only a matter of opportunity for our kids, but unfortunately, there are things that are, that we have to work around, and we have to follow the law, or we have to follow policy.
I would reiterate what Todd just said, and that Title IX is not something you can skirt. And just because other schools are doing it, it doesn't mean that they're in compliance. And I would gather that many schools aren't. If we cut a sport that has four kids, that's just four kids, that's, doesn't, that just subtracts four kids from our number. And if we look at what happened in our community at UNH, UNH's football team required them to cut men's baseball, men's swimming, and also men's tennis. And they also had had men's wrestling, and all those were cut. So it, it, it becomes a balance, and I don't know how you make that choice, but I, I don't think you could run away from Title IX. I think that we have to respect that, no matter how much that might enter into the equation of making the decision that we can't have football, you can avoid it. There are consequences.
I'll continue on. Next slide. So obviously, adhering to district policies, this really wasn't a terribly significant issue. I think it's clear that all, any programs, regardless of whether it's football or any other athletic endeavor, would be required to follow all board policies. And obviously, the football concept would be following all those policies. Obviously, there's a newly adopted policy in terms of how these programs get started, and that's kind of where at the front end of this, that, that policy right now. Obviously, sponsorship and fundraising would follow under the same guidelines that all other sports teams, or all the, or not just sports teams, all the fundraising for school district activities follow. Clearly, again, another part of the policy is all athletic programs would follow the jurisdiction of the leadership of Corey and myself, or our predecessors, should it come to, come to pass at a later time. And obviously, the eligibility requirements would be all the same for football regardless of, so really, policy was not a substantial topic of discussion because we felt that it was pretty clear-cut. Next slide. This was a topic that we, we clearly have three sets of survey data that, that reflect a wide range of responses. I mean, certainly, the Student Senate did their survey, a paper survey done in C-period. They surveyed about 50% of the student body, and out of that, they had 60 kids indicate an interest in football. The survey that was done via Alert Now identified 16 students and had a 10% response rate. And then ORYA did a survey, they, they didn't have their response rate, but they identified 33 kids at the high school age that would be indicating football. I think we came to the conclusion that there's certainly room to believe that the interest of football is here in this community. And if at some point, we're ready to go forward with it, the interest is there. It's just a question of, or maybe there. It's just a question of, how do we want to make this, or do we want to make this program happen?
The memo of understanding, which was a document that we don't really have much to say, because I know Dr. Morris came to our first committee meeting and asked that to be added to discuss. Having said that, do you want to touch on that?
Sure. So I met with three representatives of the Executive Committee of ORYA, and we had a pretty, a very nice conversation back and forth. There's anxiety, I think it's safe to say there's anxiety on both parts about, you know, sustainability of self-funding. And because ORYA had representatives on the committee, they were well aware of the discussions that were going on under Todd and Corey. And they knew that there were field issues, and they knew there was disagreement, as Corey says, not a huge disagreement on the funding, but the sustainability of the funding is still an issue for both parties. And the Title IX violation. So after we talked back and forth, and really had a great conversation, we decided that we really couldn't come to a memorandum of understanding because there were too many unknown factors for us to put something down in writing. So they have the proposal I gave you, unedited, and you have the proposal they gave us, unedited, but we were not able to bring those two documents together.
So we also looked at a number of other issues that came up in the course of our discussions. I mean, certainly, one of the things that is, if we go down the road of tuition students and expanding our student population, athletic opportunity definitely would need to be something we look at. A lot of the conversation we've had with different communities, we talk about transitioning, it's cultural issues, and athletics is definitely an area where cultural, you know, engagement and connection is created. And so certainly, when we get to that point, that might be something we want to look at. And certainly, it might be a time to look at expanding a lot of programs. We aren't there yet, but it might be an opportunity for that. The, another issue we discussed was, given the structure of our current athletic department, and our current athletic department largely is Corey, what would this do, you know, to his time and so forth? And so we discussed that. You know, clearly, there, it would be an increase in administrative tasks, 10 to 12 games of coverage and so forth. I think Corey would agree that he's up to the challenge, should we...
No question.
...get to that point. But it certainly does mean an increase in workload, no doubt about that. We did spend a lot of time talking about the, you know, the need to expand and improve facilities. You know, in a lot of ways, the two things go together. I alluded before about programs that I've, and please don't take this as my being down on lacrosse, because I'm not, it's a wonderful sport. But 15 years ago, as a community, because we had interest, we went ahead and created a very, a lacrosse program, which has engaged a lot of kids, but at no point in that time have we done anything to expand the facilities. And lacrosse, much like football, is a sport that's very hard on the place that it plays, which is part of the reason why Woodridge is less of an option for high school football versus the younger kids, because, you know, having 200-pound high school boys, you know, ripping up your field five days a week is very different than a couple of days a week with, with the smaller kids. So that's really ultimately the issue. And so facilities and where to do this really became an issue, and it's not just about football, it's about a much broader range of issues. It's also supporting the programs that already exist. And so facilities became a significant issue. And then we also spent some time talking about some of the other survey data that the Senate generated. They, they focused a lot on the cultural issues, you know, and in the Student Senate survey, 37% of the kids felt that a football program would have a negative effect on culture. 43% felt it would have a positive effect on culture. 18% didn't think it would have any impact on culture. So there's certainly some mixed feelings amongst our student body in terms of their feelings about how would this impact our school culture. But again, those are just some of the other issues that we've looked at. And that brings us kind of to, to the end, or at least brings us to the end as of June 19th. And I, and I want to emphasize that this is where we are at on June 19th, 2013. Things that we concluded from this, we, we believe that the sustainable interest may exist for an Oyster High School football program. It may be there. We also believe that, you know, expanding access to facilities and improvements on our current site are really things that should take a priority before we add more opportunities. We identified that, you know, because the MOU has not been able to be negotiated, or some other entity to take on the role of self-funding, we really don't have a mechanism at this point to guarantee self-funding. Title IX implications for all athletic opportunities, whether it's football or anything, are things that are very uncertain right now. And the, the, the impact could be significant. And so I would not be doing my due diligence if I didn't tell you that it could be a significant impact on us to go forward from a Title IX perspective. And then finally, as I mentioned before, there's no doubt that an expanded student body will generate a number of things. Revenue would be one, but it will also generate more students looking for athletic opportunities. And it may be something that is worth looking at as we get to that transition point with regards to taking on additional students. That, that brings us to the final, our recommendation. Bottom line is, and again, I want to emphasize this, both Corey and I are football fans. You know, I played football in junior high school, it doesn't, I don't look it, I did. I don't look it, but I did. I'm a big fan of the Patriots. I graduated from University of Maine. I sat through the longest football game in the history of college football, to watch the University of Maine beat Delaware in 1984. So I can tell you, it's not because I don't think football has value and has a place, but I wanted to emphasize that this recommendation is, as of June 19th, 2013, where are we? And where we are now is the uncertainty of a number of key factors in the relation to the charge of the committee makes the recommendation to start a high school football program premature at this time. In other words, I'm not recommending tonight that you start a football program. I do want to, however, emphasize that there are key issues that, if addressed, would certainly have the potential to change that stance, and that's what I'm listing here. And feel free to jump in, Corey, if I misstate anything. I mean, clearly, self-funding, and I would challenge you to think about the concept of self-funding. Is that a concept that you really realistically want to adopt? Every program that we've talked to that has football, even those that started with self-funding, are not self-funded after a period of time, because the sustainability of it is not there. If it's a program we want, we probably should talk about funding it on some level as a district. However, that being said, right now, the self-funding concept, there is no MOU, there is no mechanism to do that. So if we can get to that point where we have a method of funding it that we feel is sustainable, that's significant. Second thing, facilities are woefully inadequate in this district for athletic programs. We have a wonderful gym, I'll give you that, so our indoor sports are doing well, and when we pay for rental time on the track, and we pay for ice time, and we pay for pool time, we have a wonderful place to play at UNH. We don't really have much in the way of athletic facilities here, though, to draw upon, and to continue to add high-impact programs without considering the facilities that we have to play on, it's just not... To me, you talk sustainability, we need to first address that, and then there are lots of things that might come into play, and maybe football is one of those things. And then lastly, you know, the gender equity issue is not one to be taken lightly. I absolutely agree that one way to address it is to create a number of alternative programs or other programs that would increase female participation. You can go either way. There's a cost associated with that. And certainly, if you start talking about that, the number gets a lot higher than 40 to 65,000 a year, because you're talking about multiple other programs. So at this point, we are not recommending the start of a football program, and I would ask the board to consider that.
Thank you. Todd?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the recommendation of the principle that we not move forward at this time with the March 6 proposal for establishing a football program.
That was moved by Todd, seconded by Al.
Discussion?
I'd just make a comment on that. I'd agree with the presentation, and I'd like to thank you for that very balanced presentation, and I know that you did it under a lot of time pressure, and I really appreciate the work that you did, the committee did, and the people who presented the football proposal did. It just seems to me that there's some unresolved issues here that to go forward with them at this point is not prudent. But I also think that we've come a certain ways towards imagining what a football program would need, what we might need to do. So I would see a potential down the road for a proposal, in my view, a self-fund... You know, I would agree that if you're going to do it, do it the way every other high school does it, you'd have to pay for it. So I could imagine a proposal down the road that might, you know, solve these issues, but I don't think we're there now.
Al?
Well, first of all, if you look around at the board itself, the majority of the board members have had kids that have participated in Oyster River High School Athletics, and I have two that are currently in it, and Maria has at least one grandchild that's in it.
I had two sons.
So the value of the athletics is not lost, and I think it really is an important component of what makes Oyster River. So I would love to see it happen, but to start with the Title IX implications, I can't vote to approve something that's going to put us in violation of the law. It would be negligent on our part to do that. So looking at that, I agree with Todd. We've moved far forward. You've really identified three key components that have to be fully flushed out before they can come before us and approve it. We can't just give a blank slate. So I guess what we're saying is, go forward, fill in the blanks there, and when you've done it, come back. So it's not kicking it down forever. There's just more work to be done before we could possibly approve it.
I want to thank the whole committee for their work, too, and I think it was very wise to treat the safety issue the way that was treated. I think that, I think we look at people being able to make informed consent and people to take risks, and I think to have based a recommendation based on that safety issue would have been unfair to football, as well as unfair to other sports, which would come under that eye. I could ask a question on cost, too, and I think it's just something we look for. I agree, I think if it comes to time when Oyster River is ready for football with some of these other problems addressed, that it should be funded, you know, by the school to some extent. With the startup cost that was estimated at $25,000, I'm wondering how much that becomes a recurring cost as far as equipment needing to be replaced, training apparatus replaced and all. Does that come up, you know, every three years, four years, or is that a...
Typically, the life of a helmet, in my experiences in Ohio high school football, was a five-year process. And the unique situation we would be in here is, a standard practice that I had with football was, every year, we replaced six helmets, so that we were never in a situation where you had to replace all the helmets at once, and it was a small cost every year through that five-year process. In this Excel spreadsheet you see here, the green items dictate every five years. And again, those numbers are taken from speaking with local vendors as far as the wear and tear. Certainly, some of these items, a one-man sled, for example, could last six years, could last seven years, could last three years. But in speaking with experts in the field who sell this stuff for a living, you know, they were giving me numbers that I could use for this presentation. So the green would indicate renewal every five years, approximately every five years. The blue on this sheet indicates yearly expenses, and that takes into account the trainer, the actual game costs, stipends for coaches, similar to all our other programs if we were to go down that road, and some miscellaneous-like items that you would have to purchase on a yearly basis because of wear and tear. Football's obviously being... So is this number manageable, and can you decrease a few thousand dollars here and there? Yes, I think so. Having said that, I sent this along to multiple ADs around, saying, "Look at this. Am I way off? Am I close?" And a lot of them agreed that these were solid numbers to go with for this presentation. So that was where the numbers for projections came from.
Corey, what would the numbers look like if it were just a club sport?
To be a club sport?
It's really a matter of the number of athletes. It's not whether it's the status of whether it's a club or a varsity team.
I don't see us changing many, to be completely honest. I guess if...
What's required by the NHI, NIH, that isn't required by a club?
As far as equipment goes and uniforms? I mean, I guess the biggest difference is, if you're a club, you may not play a schedule, you may not have games, so certainly, transportation for games and obviously game costs would be something. Outside of that, I would consider these numbers very consistent to the club football option of the Seacoast Titans. I didn't reach out to them and ask that question to them, and I certainly can, if that's what you guys want, but I wouldn't consider many things different. And certainly, I think looking at football as a whole, I think the notion of starting it is to grow into a varsity program. So I think it's safe to assume these numbers would be accurate and that at least year three, it's the absolute latest.
Megan?
Okay. I have several thoughts about this. Thank you for your presentation. I feel like this is a point in time. I think it's, you said it earlier, and you concur, that there is strong demand for this sport in Oyster River. It's controversial, but I think there is enough, there's a critical mass of support, and I think it really did come through in that survey. The 50% response rate is significant. We can't ignore that. So what I think you've done over the past few months, in my opinion, you've done a lot of really important work. You've identified the obstacles. I think this committee needs to go back and address those obstacles. I think we need to come up with clear milestones of what would be required to make this work for our students. Really, you know, I think the... I'm actually surprised we're voting on this, because in my opinion, this is a stake in the ground, saying, "Okay, we have to overcome these things," but they're not insurmountable. I think a little out-of-the-box thinking, a little bit more time, maybe bringing in some other experts, people from the community, maybe someone from, you know, the town of Durham. I don't know. You should have maybe UNH athletics representation in this committee, but let's look at it more seriously and bring in additional ideas from... I'm not trying to make it a bigger committee, because I think you don't want that, but I think it's excellent that we've identified serious obstacles, but for our children and leading, you know, following our mission, we need to do this work. I feel we need, this is only the beginning, and this committee needs to continue and start this down, and hoping that we can come up with clear definitive benchmarks, our stakes in the ground, what we need to have done by when to make this program feasible in the next few, at least in the next few years. Not this fall, but maybe within the next, you know, year after that.
You have given us a number before as to what it would cost to fix our fields, and it is a million?
Well, 2.18 in addition?
In addition to...
To what's already fundraised?
No, the total, Todd.
If you're just talking about the rectangular field and a turf there with a track around it, it's about 1.8. One of the things that happens by doing that is a domino effect of other fields that have to be reconfigured. The total cost of the whole project is about 2.6 to get...
Two million?
2.6 million, of which 300, approximately 300,000...
So at this point, to suggest that we could practice on these fields that need $2.6 million, practice it before school seems not to help the situation with the field.
That's a misinterpretation. What he's saying is the cost of building a track with a turf field in the center of it. He's not talking about maintaining it, what the cost of maintaining fields is. That's an entirely different subject.
No, within the 2.6 number is the entire facility project, similar to what was presented five, six years ago. I mean, the big piece of that is a turf field, which takes away the wear and tear of the problem with the facility and lights, which extends our school day from practicing, ending at 6:00 p.m. to now ending at 9:00 p.m., which in turn would allow more athletic opportunities on our campus here at school. Certainly, as a neutralizing effect, having a facility here that doesn't, that is a safe environment year-round, being a turf field, and having lights extending our day would be a large chunk of it, for sure.
What is the research on turf fields? Have read, or it goes on?
What's their lifespan and the safety?
Not just life, yes.
The life cycle of a turf field?
And the safety issues associated with them.
Okay. In terms of the life of a turf field, it's 10 to 12 years you have to look at. Replacement?
I thought there were fine heavy metals.
Well, it really, there was some misleading information that was being floated around when Bremmer Field was being dealt with. It is true, the type of turf that they used did have some issues with it, but that wouldn't be the type of field turf that we would install. And actually, did they end up reinstalling the same thing at Bremmer that they pulled up? A newer version of the same thing. So the field turf that we'd be looking at does not have those kind of environmental runoff issues that you're talking about. As far as the injury risk, for the most part, it is seen that the injury risk is significantly reduced on turf fields. In fact, when you look at all of the NHIA tournament games now, when you get into the late part of the fall, they're switching to turf fields because, particularly because as the grounds freeze, turf doesn't freeze, it stays soft, and you have less of a risk of concussion and all of those other things. So it's seen as a safer, more true surface.
This reminds me a lot of our technology thing, where we kept adding computers, but we never fixed the backbone. And so we finally had to stop adding computers and address the backbone. And this is, unfortunately, football is, you know, it's a great program, but it's at our tipping point. Since we never fixed the backbone of our fields, we don't have the facilities, and it's exacerbated by the Title IX, because you're like, "Well, let's add another program." Well, we don't have any facilities for the next program. So we don't have enough right now for football, and the thing to balance it out, even, we don't have facilities for that either. So moving forward, I know you guys had a great presentation, but part of this is going to have to be, how do we fix our facilities to allow full participation?
Agreed. Absolutely.
So why couldn't this be part of the plan?
I mean, why can't it be stepped out, saying, "We can do up to this point," and then this is another milestone that has to be addressed before maybe it becomes a varsity sport or something like that? I don't, I don't, I still think we should keep moving forward based on, you know, there's no student rep here tonight, but we need to, at least somebody, we need to put the interests of our children on the table here. And, you know, I personally have no interest in football. I mean, I like watching football, but my children, I don't expect they'll be playing football, ever. I don't know, I could be wrong. They're ballet dancers, but never say never. But I just, you know, I think there is a very strong interest, and I think for some children, this is what is going to bring them to school and have them apply themselves academically, and I just can't ignore that. And I really would like to see, I don't want this to just get shelved. I want to see a plan, a long-term plan, to make this feasible for our district.
Well, if I could, use this as an opportunity to give my stump speech about athletic fields. It has not been something that we haven't been working towards. There is a committee we've been working on. I will be honest with you, though, on two separate occasions, we were ready to come forward with some thoughts that we had to share with you on it, and other issues sidetracked us from getting to being able to talk about it. One was in November, when there was a political issue in Lee around trying to put a turf field at Littlera Park, and we thought that would be poor timing to come forward and talk about another turf field in the community when there was significant debate about that one. And then we were just about to come to you in March, April, when we were presented with a football issue. We do have a committee that has been meeting and working on the field issue. I do feel the Title IX issue is one that we are in the process of working through, and certainly, we will have some recommendations for that coming out of what's happening here. And then obviously, the self-funding piece, that's one that was really not within the charge of what we were to look at. That was the MOU that negotiations, for whatever reason, did not end up arriving at a sustainable thing. So I see that there, two of the three issues we've identified are things that are in the process of being addressed. They're not being backburnered.
The frustrating part for me as a board member is that hot and heavy and passionate issues come to us one at a time. Do I like football more than all their kindergarten? Do I like kindergarten more than world languages? That picture and knowing the pocketbook, so to speak, that's a really difficult and frustrating part that we don't ever get to talk that way. It's always, do we like football or not? Or can we talk about, you know, the big picture?
I'm curious if you have any thoughts on the discrepancy between the survey that you all did and the survey that the students did, the participation rate being so different and the interest rate?
I'm going to go back to that.
Sure.
And I know in the committee, we talked a lot about response rates, having some, I mean, clearly, the Student Senate survey was a paper survey given to most of our students, of which 50% responded. One of the things that certainly Corey probably deals with more than I do, whenever you ask kids, "Do you want to do something?", a lot more kids sign up than actually arrive and actually do it. So the 60 number, I mean, I think there are 60 kids who said, "Yeah, that'd be pretty good."
be pretty good. But what was not a part of that survey was, how much would you be willing to pay? Would you be willing to, you know, would your family be willing to pay $500 or those kind of questions? So it didn't really have as much of those, those issues looked at. It was more just, would you like to play football? And that's a fairly open-ended question. Our survey, I think that our committee felt it was overly targeted. In other words, we really tried to pin down exactly, we sent it to the households of seventh, eighth, ninth, and, yeah, seventh, eighth, ninth, 10th and 11th graders, basically on the theory that those would potentially be the grades that would be involved in a football program were we to start it in 2014 or 15. And it was very specific to those households. We sent it out four or five times and the feedback we got from members of the committee was, well, maybe an email survey is too archaic for this generation and maybe they just won't do an email survey. I would say that we, when I sent out the survey to the senior class about the change of graduation dates, I told you, within 24 hours, I had a near 100% response rate. So I know when people want to give me information, they don't hesitate. So there's, so anyways, that second, I mean, I think the, the committee believed that the school survey done through Alert Now may have been artificially low. I would contend maybe the Student Senate Survey might be artificially high. The ROIH survey, because we really didn't have a specific, like, who did you ask? It was hard for us to do it, so we didn't have response rates. But obviously there's a range here, anywhere from 16 to 60, depending on how you want to think about it. So those are my thoughts, as unscientific as they may be.
What's the margin of error? I mean, that would help us evaluate these numbers.
I'd have to get a.
I mean, I'm just saying.
Exactly.
Could be 100%, could be zero. It's not a scientific survey.
Right.
Well, it's, the survey's a survey. You can apply basic statistical analysis to this.
But surveys can be biased.
Well, I know that and that's why I'm asking what the margin of error is.
If we wanted a survey that we wanted a standard deviation on, then I would use UNH. Our surveys are just.
Maybe that's, maybe that's what this committee, I don't know.
Yeah.
Maria, your frustrations hopefully will be embraced by the strategic plan. I would like to make a recommendation that the Finance and Operations Committee contacts Todd to get the folks who are working on the.
We have a motion on the table.
No, I, but we're having a conversation about this motion on the table. And so what you need to know is that there's this group that is meeting to develop the Finance and Operations part of the strategic plan and your grounds people, your committee that's been meeting forever, needs to have some input into that decision-making because following what Megan said, what is our, what is our plan moving forward? And so if we, if we don't have the right people connecting with the people who are developing the plan, then it's not going to be a very effective plan. My other concern is in, in the strategic plan framework, Maria, is that there's nothing that speaks to anything beyond student or student engagement and achievement. Does that include athletics and extracurricular activities? I don't know if that committee will discuss that.
I think those are all excellent questions and good discussions, but right now we have a motion to accept the recommendation of, of our administrative team.
Can I make a motion to amend, Toms, and that is, and I know you guys are going to cringe who are on that committee out there, and so are you guys, but that instead of just stopping and saying that football is premature, that we allow the committee on football to continue to work on it, to answer the three questions, which were, I believe, finding adequate facilities, dealing with Title IX.
Well, this is in the motion.
He's amending.
He's amending.
I'm amending, Tom.
Yeah, but it's getting worse.
I'm just, well, I was trying to make sure that they gave them the charge, the three things. So they investigate the self-funding, they investigate the facilities and they investigate the Title IX.
Why don't you just let that motion go and make a separate one?
Okay.
Better than giving up the amendment. Just do it as two seconds.
Well, he moved it, so is there a second?
Do you want me to draw it and then?
Withdraw the amendment?
Withdraw the amendment.
Okay. So we have a motion on the table, on the floor, to accept the recommendation.
Further discussion?
One question about the cost and the self-funding, you know, the ROIH was very adamant that they could self-fund. And when this training came up, was there more cautious about, you know, whether they could really meet the, get the students to meet the cost for the football program? I mean, I hear what your recommendation is and I understand the sustainability problem, but if, if in itself, did they feel that the members of the, feel that they could still meet the cost to go forward if it was self-paid?
I, I think it's, and I hesitate to characterize the thoughts of other people, but I think it's safe to say that they feel confident that, you know, on a yearly basis, they feel that they could raise the money.
Right. Even the extra amount, the $10,000 to.
I think it's safe to say there's, the supporters do feel confident that they could.
Okay.
And I guess, you know, just to, actually, I know you're in the middle of a motion discussion.
Further discussion?
I think I would welcome a revised.
On the motion.
Yeah, my mo. Is it? Did you withdraw your motion?
I withdraw and come back to it.
Okay. I think my motion would preclude him coming back and I'd certainly, certainly welcome a revised, you know, proposal, but I think rather than give a tentative, we're going to go ahead with football, we need to see another proposal that resolves these questions and puts a price tag on it, because then I think we have to see whether, how that fits in with some other priorities. You know, if we're going to have to reconstruct, you know, the locker facilities, what's that going to cost? If it's, you know, if it's, if we're going to be, part of this money's coming from the school, the school district, how much is that going to be? I think we have to see those. And so I think my proposal is that we, you know, we've gone partway, we've developed interest. I think there's a community that's interested in this, but we have these major issues. And our policy is that these issues have to be presented or resolved and kind of proposal come forward with this and then resolve and have the recommendation of the principal. So I, nothing, you know, I don't think what I'm saying would preclude what you're doing.
No.
So, you know, I think I'd welcome that proposal, but these things have to be settled, I think, before we give a green light to go ahead.
Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, could we have a show of hands, please? Five in affirmative, opposition, two. Motion passes. Mr. Hough?
I would like to make a motion to empower the football committee to go forward and to resolve or to investigate the three issues, which were facilities, the funding and the Title IX, and to resolve them and come back to the board.
Can you make a motion to tie volunteers down? Why don't you?
I would, could you put a timeline?
I was at the timeline. What do you feel comfortable with a timeline?
Well, if I could just comment, two of the three.
Can we second the motion? I mean.
Well, I want a valid motion.
Yeah.
He can empower the administration, but to take victims out of the community, is that you have to do this?
No, no. I mean, I would, in the motion, it would be the principal and the athletic director would, however they self.
Well, by board policy, we would have to come back when we're ready to make a recommendation to say, we feel these issues are resolved, we are ready to recommend the program. So that would have to happen, so we would have to be involved. But I would point out that two of the three things that we've listed here as obstacles are not football-specific obstacles. And I, I guess, I have, I respect and have enjoyed spending time with the five members of the football committee. They're great people. Thank you for being here. I question the necessity for that particular group to continue to function. I think we're hearing very clearly from you, you want us to continue to work these issues and you want us to make them a priority. And I will tell you that I feel much the same way. I would like to tackle, I'm sorry, football puns here. I would like to be able to, to resolve those issues so that we can have a conversation about whether or not this is something we want to have. I feel that right now, this isn't a discussion specifically about football. This is a discussion about other school district issues that need resolution and I'm happy to be involved in the resolution of those issues, but I, I don't want to make my football comment.
I'll change the wording on that and just say that the, that the superintendent, we empower him to develop a committee that investigates the facilities, the MOU funding and the Title IX.
What is MOU?
Memorandum of Understanding, the financing, financial party. Is that better? Is that better? You like that wording better?
Well, the other aspect there too, Al, and again, I'm not trying to make my life more complicated, but the issue is funding. The proposal was self-funding, but that, I think, looking at funding as a broader concept is certainly worth looking.
We do have a motion.
Well, we can take off MOU and just say funding.
Laura, I'll second.
And second if I am. Now you can.
Got it.
We leave this to the superintendent to carry forth.
We're calling a vote.
Discussion?
Discussion.
I would just want to make sure we have at least one, a follow-up on this in the future, you know, within the next, I mean, with the summer coming up, maybe once the school year started, things settle into place, maybe late September, get some kind of follow-up on this.
If, if you as a board are open to it, when you're having your agenda planning discussions, Cory and I would love to come back and talk with you this summer about field planning.
Yeah.
So put us on the agenda, July, August?
August.
Great.
Let's talk to the motion.
Could you say the motion again?
Okay, so the motion would be to empower the superintendent to develop a committee to investigate or resolve the funding, the facilities and the timeline implications of football.
Do you want it to say to resolve or to?
Address.
Address. Sorry, I just want to.
Are we ready for a vote? All those in favor? Seven in the affirmative. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. And thanks to everybody who has shown an interest in this subject. Assistant Superintendent, report.
Nope. Nothing from Carolyn tonight.
Superintendent's report, moving right into all-day kindergarten.
Sure. Another lifetime. So first of all, I want to thank the board members who attended the public meetings. We had one at Massway and one at Mohairmet, per direction of the board, in terms of finding out whether there was interest. I would have to say that there is clear and absolute interest in all-day kindergarten, no question about it. However, and I'm going to just read this into the record because I think the public needs to hear it too, "The preponderance of those in attendance strongly objected to charging tuition, believing that the kindergarten program is fundamental to the mission of the school system." So for those who've attended, very, very strong philosophical belief that we shouldn't be charging. So I wanted to step back for a second because this idea of, of tuition for kindergarten didn't come out of thin air. It was actually part of a conversation we had as a board with the ABC Committee back in October, when we had the all-day session, we were looking for ways that we might generate revenue outside of taxpayers. So I wanted to say that because that kind of got lost in the conversations. So in that particular day, we talked about a whole host of different ways we might generate revenue to be able to enhance our programming. So coming back to the opportunity this presented wasn't quite as, you know, off the wall as it initially seemed, but, but bringing it out to the public was really interesting because within the ABC Board discussion that day, you know, we, we touched on a lot of things and this particular issue didn't get, you know, much reaction. And so we moved on. So when you bring this out to the public, there are definitely people, and I don't want to misrepresent this either, there are people who absolutely want us to start a kindergarten program, whether we have to pay for it or not. So when I say the preponderance of people want the kindergarten program, that's whether they pay or not pay. But the issue really became sort of a philosophical issue in terms of kindergarten in our district. You know, many people pointed out, for example, that poorer communities and surrounding communities have all-day K and they don't charge. So, you know, that, that is something we need to be considering as we go forward with all-day K. In terms of my personal commitment to all-day K, I think it's, it's absolutely critical that at some point we face the issue of all-day kindergarten. If Carolyn was speaking instead of me, she would absolutely go right straight to the common core and the standards, the expectations that the state and federal government and probably ourselves at this point are placing on five-year-olds is far greater than it's ever been in the history of public education. So an all-day kindergarten program as an idea, I think, has powerful resonance with the community. I used the same PowerPoint presentation that I used with you. I didn't amend it or change it based on what I heard at either, either meeting. And I would say that in essence, the issue that's coming forward, the people who have stepped forward, who have sent me, I have 16 emails from incoming parents who absolutely committed to the idea. And so that would say, well, 16, but you have 100 kids registered. So you could, you know, extract from that, that, you know, 84 families aren't interested, but that's not the case. They're very interested. The issue is they can't afford it. And so then the issue came up of where'd the number come from? Well, it costs us approximately $16,000 a day to educate, a year to educate a child. So half of 16 is eight. I looked at the surrounding private providers, 210 was actually less than some and equal to others. But as parents pointed out, that includes time all the way till 5:30, whereas our proposal didn't. So, you know, there definitely was an issue about, about cost. Then somebody says, well, what if it was, you know, less cost? I'm not sure that addresses the issue, you know, whether it's 4,000, 3,000, 5,000 or 7,000, it's still thousands. And then the issue is really kindergarten, first grade, second grade, third grade, shouldn't they all be treated the same and shouldn't kindergarten be offered? Now, several of the parents had come forward who were at both of those meetings and said, Jim, would you at least, as you're reporting back to the board, share with them that we are interested in paying and we could, you know, personally fund the pilot so we could have some experience with it and you would have some experience with it. So as we go through this conversation, I just want to put that out there. Here are the questions that I think the parents were asking me. Is it, is this proposal too late for proper implementation? Is charging tuition fundamentally appropriate? And then the, the ultimate question is really one of philosophy. Do we believe we should be charging for services that are essential to our operation? You know, the charging issue kind of echoes the conversation we just had, you know? And so you could tie it into the football conversation. We don't ask any sport, ice hockey, swimming, to pay the full freight for anything. So I think that that's the bigger question the board has to be talking about in terms of these proposals. I didn't mind having the meetings, they weren't warm and fuzzy, but I tell you, I learned a lot from the meetings. I really do. And, you know, when people say, geez, that was a tough meeting, I have to say, yeah, it was a tough meeting, but I leave with more information and more meaningful information from those meetings than I have when I go in. And so I don't ever regret having these meetings. They're, they're very good, they're very intense and people were, you know, very willing to participate. I would say we had about 75 families represented, so we had really good participation by families. So I don't think we were hearing from one side or the other, there was pretty broad participation. And I just want to say, say to the families who attended both meetings, thank you very much, because it's always an education and it's always great to be able to talk to them about important issues. And so this was another important issue. That's where I am tonight on this and I would entertain any questions the board has.
Megan?
So there, you have 16 individuals who have expressed interest.
We do.
In paying the, the amount that you had put out there. If we were to support, allow, I guess I look at it too, it would be like a pilot, you know? know, a way to examine what a full-day classroom would be like in Oyster River. But for those 16 kids, that's their one and only, well, most likely their one and only chime, they're going to be in kindergarten. So I'm interested in the curriculum. You know, we don't have, as far as I know, a full-day curriculum defined for Oyster River.
We do not.
So how, what would happen in that classroom? I mean, how would?
We have the whole summer in front of us.
Okay.
So that we would engage our teachers and the university has a very powerful early childhood program, and we would engage them on developing the curriculum. But remember, we're not doing it in absentia. You know, other school systems of the state of New Hampshire are already doing it. All the school systems in Maine and Massachusetts are doing it. So we've got plenty of models in terms of curriculum.
I have a follow-up question.
I shouldn't say all in Massachusetts. I know all in Maine, most in Massachusetts.
Actually, I have three questions. That's one. My second question is, in your report, you talk about the academic needs for full-day kindergarten. I think the board, we need a little more detail about exactly, we hear, oh, because of core, you know, the core standards, we're going to need this. I'd like to get more specificity about the academic reasons for wanting to do that.
Sure.
And I think that might be something when we, if we're looking at putting it into the budget or something down the road, we would really need that justification. And then my third follow-up, my third question is about Moheramit and the overcrowding and what is the plan to address that? Because that's still there, that's a real issue.
Yeah, so I floated three different ideas, and none of them have taken root in terms of the board making a motion or direction. So, you know, my, I personally believe that setting a course of action that impacts families for the fall is wrong. I think setting a course of action that affects families for a year from fall is right. We have to address the issue. But we really have to talk about which issue, how the board ultimately wants to resolve it, because I can resolve it with a bus line. We will have people who are upset regardless of what decision we make, whether we, you know, use a bus line, whether we reconfigure schools, whether we use all-day kindergarten. At some point, there is going to be a constituency in our community who is vehemently opposed to whatever decision you make. But you have two elementary schools next year upwards of 100 student population difference. Resource distribution is equal, therefore equity for the students is unequal. And we need to be able to address that. So my goal would be to have a conversation about it on July 17th and to ask the board to make a decision on August 14th so that we can inform everybody who's impacted, you know, the decision of the board. And then a year from the fall, we implement the decision.
Is there anything that can be done as a stopgap to alleviate the problem at Moheramit for those students coming in the fall?
I just had a conversation, actually written letter after the conversation, parent asked if they could send their child to Massway. I absolutely said yes. It was no busing issue and so forth. So we could send out a letter to families saying voluntarily in an interim, do you want, do you want to move your child?
What about new students that are coming into the district? Maybe they just moved here from another place. Are we giving them that, this information and saying, you may want to put your kid? I mean, they're new, they don't have all the roots set down. They might be more amenable to going to Massway?
We can do that. We can ask. Until you make a direct policy decision, though, all I can do is ask. I mean, once you make a firm line in the sand, make a decision, then I can say, this is the school. But up until that point, it's all on a voluntary basis, and we certainly can do that. Yep? Yes, Anne?
Thank you, Jim, for expressing what Massachusetts and Maine are doing. In New Hampshire, we legally are not obligated to provide full-day kindergarten. We receive no monetary support from the state of New Hampshire to provide all-day kindergarten. The state of New Hampshire deems a cost of education in New Hampshire to still be only $3,450 to educate a child. Taxpayers of Durham, Lee, and Madbury pick up the difference. Now, you said it was 16,000. I think it's less for the elementary schools, it's 14, 13, whatever the layout is.
Yeah, I use the average. I know it's around 16.
The concern parents have is how come if I lived here in this town where they pay less taxes and they offer full-day kindergarten, I would not question that perhaps the cost of their employees is way less. They're not carrying the burden that we carry to pay for our staff. So what I think we need to consider while we're making this decision is, do we need a longer school day? You commented on the common core curriculum requiring more time. Well, it can't just be impacting kindergarten in a negative way. It has to be first through 12. And also, I don't believe that we have salary guidelines for new hires. And I think that we have to seriously look at that.
What do you mean by salary guidelines?
When we hire someone new, they have a range of steps. A position, a person could come in with just a master's degree and no additional, and that's one, that's one cost, and someone who comes in with a master's and 10 years of experience is another cost. And if we're trying to align ourselves so that we can offer full-day kindergarten at no cost, well, then we have to look at the nuts and bolts of why we have to charge for it, because we have a much more expensive staff than other districts do. We can't, we can't look at one and not the whole reason why we have to charge for it. It's not free, and we get absolutely no supplement from the state of New Hampshire.
Thank you.
I'd just like to thank you for bringing the issue of all-day kindergarten to the floor. I think that that's been a really powerful presentation, and I think there's, I think the support of the community for that. I would hope that as a board, we could move heaven and earth in terms of adjusting costs.
Holding down costs, maybe as you're suggesting.
So that we can build into the budget, or at least try to build into the budget. Universal all-day kindergarten would start in 2014. If we could set that as a goal, we may not reach it, and we may not be able to make all the savings. There may be an expense, but then you're adding value to the system. But if, you know, I mean, I'm a little bit uncomfortable with starting out with a small pilot where people pay and then moving the next year to a universal system. I think that the big goal should be to be at the universal kindergarten by 2014, if we could try to get there. You know, there'll be some savings from the buyout because we won't be paying the $20,000, you know, whether that could be, I don't know, I'm not a budget person, whether that could be applied, but if we could move that direction. And I just think that would just create, you know, this really rich opportunity for kids to get this great start. And there's so much more we know about literacy in the kindergarten years. I think when we went to kindergarten, it was just like, you know, nap time and, you know, all that kind of stuff, socialization. I think there's a sense of what so much more needs to be done. So I guess I would love to see that be a goal that we just try to get to. Can we build that into the budget?
No.
I also thought, really glad Jim had those forums. It's a rare opportunity where we shut up and you guys actually get a chance to talk a lot more than we do. And, I mean, sometimes when you think of a project, I mean, I look at all-day kindergarten, and it's clearly the right thing to do. It just is. And in my tunnel vision, thinking that through, you tend to forget some of the other issues that are around it. And what I heard clearly from a couple people there, Jim alluded to it already, is that there's a large group of dual-working parents that are already using that private kindergarten and that, you know, while we're extending it out to 3 o'clock, it's just not enough for them. So we're not, in a sense, competitive with the other private providers, so we have to do that. The second thing was this, a really great guy who said, and Megan alluded, show me what this, before I sign up to spend $7,000 on this, give me all the details, which is exactly what does my day look like? What am I paying for? And I thought that was really a great thought. And then the guilt part of it, which is like, I had somebody say to me, well, wait a second. If all-day kindergarten is universally beneficial and I can't afford to spend the $7,000, does that mean my kid is behind when they get into first grade? To which I couldn't answer. And how can I justify saying, wait a second, because you have more money in a public education setting, I'm going to allow certain kids to get an advantage over other kids? And that kind of goes against with, and I don't know how to resolve that. So that, I just call it my guilt element, and that's something that we're going to need to address. And then I also heard another mother had a great point, which is like, you know, I'm not sure I really want to go to full-day kindergarten, but the social pressure now, I see these 16 other kids that are going to go into full-day kindergarten in a really excellent environment, you know, whether it's right for my kid or not, maybe I'll just put them in there because, you know, they're not part of what these other kids are doing. So I think that we have some more work to do to really clarify, and I like Tom's idea. I don't know what the price point of this is. As we keep stepping down, we're always going to have somebody that we leave out. So, I mean, Tom's idea really, I mean, if it's universally shown to be beneficial to everybody, I find it hard that we're going to exclude some kids from this. It's like, it should be, we wouldn't exclude, you know, everyday math or some math tutoring for third graders. Why would we do it to kindergartners? So, I mean, that's an issue we're going to have to overcome.
Ken? That was my feeling. Going into the night that I attended, I just had a lot of problem with the fact that we're defining kindergarten, all-day kindergarten, as being something that's very important that is really going to give kids more time that they need and the education they need. How can we not be offering it to everyone? How can we define it that if you're able to pay for it, you're going to get that advantage? And I think as a public school system, I feel that that is a direction that's very dangerous to go in, and we shouldn't go in. And private programs, you know, the world's not fair, but people can join into private programs. But as a school district, I would have a tough time, a child going or not going to kindergarten based on the family's ability to pay.
So in order to go forward, Madam Chair, it would require a motion of the board, and I'm not hearing one. But I am hearing, I'm going to paraphrase and make sure that I'm paraphrasing correctly. What I'm hearing from the board is to continue to work this issue. And I will continue to work this issue because it is, I consider it one of the more vitally important issues that we have in front of us.
And I think it also is an important way to deal with the student inequity between the two elementary schools. I think that would be a shame to kind of lose kindergarten and then focus on busing different districts and, you know, opening up that can of worms when we really should, I think, focus on the kindergarten.
I would add that in those conversations, there are people who took exception to children being largely having all-day K at Massway, but that wasn't a predominant theme at all in those meetings, that I think that the issue of favoring the kindergarten in one school versus the other all-day program was brought up by about two people publicly. Doesn't mean that people didn't have thoughts about it. But that issue wasn't as strong an issue as I anticipated it to be. And it largely would favor putting the all-day program in Massway and the Moheramit conversation. The question was asked, and I said yes, and it didn't generate the same passion as the philosophy around whether we should be paying for it at all.
Ken?
So I agree with, having attended the initial discussion about whether we should reconfigure, where there's an overwhelming kind of request, demand for full-day kindergarten and seeing it at these meetings, that we should proceed. And an issue that ties into it a little bit, if we're not proceeding with this next year, but something that was raised at a board meeting, the issue of special children who are now in half-day kindergarten, missing a lot of that day of kindergarten because of the special services they're needing. Is there some way we can build in a model so as we have this space that they can get that additional time?
For this coming year?
For this coming year, so we don't lose sight of that.
We will have a couple of obstacles like we had in the previous conversation around facilities. Part of the, you know, opportunity of this particular presentation is we had a couple of classrooms open up. So we'll continue to work and address those issues and see how far we can push that envelope. I know that Dennis and Carrie are both committed to this, and when you have administrators that are committed to it, along with Carolyn and myself, I'm pretty sure that they'd be willing to relocate, rearrange, readjust in order to, if this is something the board felt strongly about. And I think the signal that I'm seeing from the board in terms of nods ahead is a strong issue. Lots of work to do before I get seven votes, but it's a strong issue that resonates.
Do you want a motion?
I don't need one, Madam Chair. I think I can do this one because I just, it's a passion. I don't need to be directed to, unless you feel like you need to direct me.
No, but I think we need to get it on the table that it is an important issue, and it should be very much considered in the budget for the following year as well as the bus lines. I know that people won't like it, but it has been done in the past, and it needs to be corrected every so often so that we have equity between the schools. But if kindergarten is good for some, for the goose, it's good for the gander, too.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Coming from the Minnesota authority.
Farming stuff. Yes.
I just want to ask a question about, when you talk about universal kindergarten, there are parents who do not want full-day kindergarten.
We would not force it on any parent who does not want it.
So it wouldn't be a requirement?
No. When we were talking about this idea, we were talking, the structure of the day to put the academics in the morning and the socialization skills, which we continue to have to do because they're five-year-olds, you know, obviously that runs through the whole day. If a parent wanted to continue a half-day program, then certainly would be within their parental rights, because it's not, as we've noted earlier, it's not a mandated program in New Hampshire.
And I really would like the board to be kept apprised about what's happening at Moheramit in terms of enrollment. I know that's a moving target, so at our next meeting.
July meeting, we'll have it already on there.
Yeah, thank you. That would be helpful.
No problem.
I would also like you to, if it's possible, examine the length of the current kindergarten day, the half-day? And if we determine that it's a half-day model, I'm curious why that isn't a longer half-day?
All I was doing was using the parameters that we currently use for our first grades through 12.
No, our current half-day program, I know, because I had a child who did it, you put them on the bus, and you go do a load of laundry, and you turn around, you come back out and get them off the bus.
Are you doing it down by the river end?
You're supposed to keep that in your hat. I don't know, logistics with buses, I just, been there, done that, don't think that's the issue. And so we should probably be examining that at the same time.
We'll look at it. Thank you.
Is it possible to think about doing an after-school tuitioned kindergarten for parents who want to keep their kids there from 3 to 5?
We have an after-school program at both schools that we basically turn our facilities over to, and it's run privately. So, but it is a cost issue. Thank you, guys. Appreciate your time.
Moving right along, business administrator.
Good evening. I'm back again with another update on your budget. And my list of possible expenditures from your fund balance. I did update the budget to reflect a balance of around $750,000 expended, expected obligations around $250,000. You did approve the alumni survey at the last board meeting.
Yes.
So we're at about $400,000, $500,000. And I've added to my list a request for some broadcast channel equipment because we now have our own station. So we're going to need some equipment to fund, to get that up and running.
Just came through.
Can you elaborate on that?
Yep. Yep, the school system has been working with the town of Durham in separating our station from the towns, and Todd Selig has been negotiating with Comcast to that effect for a long time, long before I even got here. So it was an issue when I came in in the summer, and this past week, we got a letter indicating that that had been resolved, and we'll be giving our own station. So the first question I, after Kathleen and Alex did their dance. and Alex did their dance about yay, 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 I said, okay, Tom, what's this cost? Because the, the way that this new station is gonna work will need to mimic what the town of Durham does in terms of being able to present the information that comes out, and that's where that number comes from. About $8,000 worth of equipment to be able to effectively utilize the new channel.
Could we no longer function? I'm just, I need some historical backup here. I, I recollect years ago when we had the notion of our own TV station brought to the board, and we were told, there's no cost. And then suddenly, there was cost.
Whole room back there of cost.
Right, well, it, I mean, this is, this is a need for transparency.
Sure.
That, and how does this really tie into student learning? And I, it's not that I don't, I love Kathleen. Where is she? Really, I love her. But, you know, this, I think it's, it's only fair that we understand how this fits into our vast plan.
So, I can't give you the historical perspective, and we probably can invite Kathleen up, but I know in, within the school year, we've seen Al dance across the TV screen on ORH TV, and I've been on it several times, several of you have. So, Kathleen uses students to do that work, so it's definitely integrated into the curriculum of the high school. And Kathleen very nicely came up to the podium while I was talking, and let her answer the academic component.
Sure, I'm not sure I-
The issue is, how does this service our kids?
Okay, so, we have now, we have Thursday, Friday, Saturday, where we have television here, and we're gonna have 24/7 at some point, which has been building and building. We've been waiting, so we've been getting ready for it. And my classes create video for it, and I think it's a great learning opportunity. There's so many different projects that we do that I think relates to, whether it's journalism, sports, or interviewing, there's just so many skills that I think go into it.
Is it possible, and I, I know that the other board members have this same interest, the focus is at the high school, is it possible that this service can broaden to events that happen at the elementary school and the middle school, and they can get the same airtime that the high school gets?
Yeah, that's the goal. That is the goal. It's, it's my time and how to integrate it, but I would love to see that happen.
I think we all wanna see that, Anne, but the issue is Kathleen's teaching classes, and the, and the high school kids who are producing the video are taking classes. So, it's the issue of how do you physically manage people's time so they can be at events at the middle school or the two elementary schools?
And I think we're getting there, and I think there has to be, you know, new ways to approach it, but the issue now is just that I find it kind of exciting that we'll have an opportunity to communicate directly all the time to the public. Right now, it's kind of confusing when we're on. People don't always know our days, or why something wasn't on at a certain time, and I would really look forward to having like Mondays devoted to, you know, one particular, maybe sports, and Wednesdays would be politics, and Fridays would be student films, and, you know, mixed in between, we'd have to create a schedule, but, and then repeats, school board meetings, of course, all the time. So, now it's kind of a hodgepodge, we just put things on when we can, but there would be, like, we'd have our own station, and it'd be like a communication device. That's the way I see it. And hopefully, there'd be more buy-in from the community, people, you guys could do roundtable discussions, and we'd have a lot of time and a lot of content to fill. But what we were looking for, the numbers would be, when we're not on air, if we, if we're not showing something directly, there wouldn't be a bulletin board. So, we would cut back to new in the cable news or something. So, this way, it would be, again, another communication device that the town is using that we don't really have control over, that I'd like to take to another level. Like, I'd like to really advertise things just for the school. And I was even thinking of like, you know, relaunching the station in a way, and like really celebrating the fact that this is, you know, here, and get everybody to tune in, and look forward to the, to the, to the things that are on there.
Thank you.
Got a question. So, without this equipment, can you take advantage of the station at all?
We can, right, exactly what we're doing now. But what we don't have, we wouldn't have a bulletin board. So, again, when we're not on, we would go to, like, new in the cable news, it would just default to something that the cable provider, Comcast, decides.
Okay.
Which I feel is a missed opportunity. So, it would be unfortunate, I think, just to not have that again, pushing information out. So, but no, we would still, we'd still provide content.
I don't have Comcast, so do I care?
You do. Yeah, you do.
I do.
I was on Oyster River TV, but it was like, oh, sure. But I think actually, why, what the cool thing for me is I got to see it from starting at the beginning of the year to how far they came in that last one.
Thanks.
And when, it was amazing, when it, you know, it kind of got going, when the journalism kids started coming in, and they were doing stuff on the tuition stuff, it was awesome. I mean, I had people come up to me who had seen that, and they were saying, yeah, I saw the Oyster River. So, I think, you know, we've started the tip of something that really can grow, and she's right about the bulletin board thing. I mean, how many times have we said, oh, you know what, we wanna put this up, you know, if you wanna join the ABC, or if you, there's this meeting or that meeting, that we have it so that people can look at that, besides our alert now or everything else, and the general public can see, you know, what's going on in our school. So, it's just a really, really, you know, exciting educational thing, as well as a good tool for us, so.
Yeah, I see it as a service, I really do, because there is a population, I think, that, that watches it, who do not go to the website, or, you know, I, I didn't think so, but it, more and more that I've been here, I realize that there, there's a population of people that watch it. And we were thinking of renaming the channel Al TV.
I keep hearing the tip of something, it can grow to something more. Would that involve more staff?
No, it's current staff. We're not talking about staffing issues. We're just talking about the technology needed to continue to inform the public. I see it as part of our overall communication strategy, as Al just said. You know, we sent out 4,700 postcards, and we had 90 people show up. If there were video clips that were happening on TV, and the people knew that that tuition conversation was coming up, you know, in the way that Kathleen runs the station, it's repetitive, so that it comes up at different points in time, then we might reach a greater population when it comes to broader conversations. So, it's not just about, you know, the sports issue, it's about informing the public of the work you're doing, because a lot of the work you're doing will be groundbreaking work that have great impact on them. And so, without this device, we cannot roll the information. Essentially, it shuts us down, and we just, we, we do the work that the kids are doing, ORH TV and all of that, and that runs. But when that stuff isn't running, then it just, we'll, we'll just, you know, go to the news. And I think that's, I do agree with Kathleen, that's the missed opportunity.
So, the whole iceberg can come up with the same staff? That's what you're saying?
Yes, yeah, we're not asking for any staff.
At this point?
At this point.
Ask another question. Oh, Kathleen's set down. Would this be streaming all the time on our website as well?
Not at the moment, but it's a little work for it, not all the time.
Okay, so I think there's a large population of people who do watch, for example, they do go to our website, and they do utilize it, and they watch board meetings, they watch the videos the students have made on the website.
Yep.
So, I'm also, you know, I think there's also a large number of people who are canceling their Comcast, to be honest with you. I think-
I agree.
An increasing, you know, not much to watch on television. So, I'm just, I'm wondering, do we need this-
I see it as an opportunity, we're gonna have it anyways. I'd rather it not sit in the black. So, they're giving it to us, so I'd, I'd like to use it.
Oh, give us a station, equipment.
Yeah, the, the, right, right, the Comcast, so we'll have our own number, and, but I do, I do hear what you're saying, and I do try, by practice, I take everything and I put it on the website, too. I have a Vimeo page for the students' work, and I have our website, so trying to integrate those. It won't be streaming 24 hours, but hopefully the video that you do see will make its way to the web at some point, so.
Thanks. Kathleen?
Sorry. We just approved a slate of policies tonight. One was publications and school-sponsored media. I'm, I'm hopeful that you've seen all these policies, and if you haven't, you should.
Okay.
And just to make sure that everything's copacetic, there's a number of them. There's advertising in schools, publication in school-sponsored media, students in publications, and a number of things that-
Yep.
You, you, your work's going to impact, so.
Absolutely, yeah, I'll take a look, thank you.
So, are you gonna manage this station?
Yep, I do now.
So, I mean, it seems like your scope of responsibility is gonna, is going to go up. I mean, you're gonna make policy decision what goes on that station, too?
Once she gets, yeah, I mean, it's really, for her, her job doesn't change. She does it now. I mean, she's just feeding it into the town. Now, she's just feeding it into our, our unit. There's nothing that changes in terms of the parameters of Kathleen's job.
I will try to gather more content. I mean, that'll obviously change. I'd like to go to other schools, so there's definitely goals to help it grow, but at the immediate time.
I guess, I'm just gonna say that I think we're, if it becomes as broad as I think it could become, I think we need to have some kind of policy surrounding this, because we'll have a little more latitude with what we could do. That's all.
Yeah.
I'm not trying to make a mountain out of a molehill, but-
We could look at what other school systems do that have TV channels.
Yeah, that's all, yeah, definitely.
That just added to your list. I said you didn't have anything more to do.
I'll do, sorry.
You're looking for a motion? Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, I was gonna make a motion that we, we approve the six items for expenses to consider. Then we could discuss, you know, a medical plan, medical plan consulting and education, which I think will be useful, given the negotiation that's gonna be coming up, and middle school roof ladders. I can imagine not opposing that. High school drive replacements, central office computer replacements, broadcast channel, which you've just been talking about, amplifiers for police fire, which I think are absolutely essential. So, I move to approve all of those.
At a cost of what?
I second.
That was moved by Tom, second by Anne.
Now I have a discussion. Sue, at our last meeting, I thought we approved some of these already. Did not approve the ladders?
No.
Just the alumni survey.
It's the survey.
Okay, thank you.
Alumni survey.
I was just so excited about the survey, I forgot.
More discussion? Ken?
I'll have to abstain from the vote, because the first item, the medical plan consulting, could affect my spouse. It would be a service that she will possibly be receiving.
Further discussion? Hearing done, could we have a show of hands? Six in the affirmative, one abstention, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sue.
Okay, we have no student here. We've done the football. Announcements and commendation from the district, short ones since we're-
Very short.
Four at past nine o'clock.
Very short. I just wanna congratulate the class of 2013 for graduating on Friday night, and, and doing it under such beautiful weather, unlike the weather on June 7.
Okay, the board. Ken?
In light of what Todd said, are we prepared to make a counteroffer when Weather Channel comes and tries to snatch him away because of his weather? I just wanted to, and just bring attention to the art show that was at Massway, the artist in residence project they had where tiles were developed and now incorporated into the school with the artwork that the kids in the school did. It was just really a neat event, and really showed the, the spirit and the community involvement in that school as well. And graduation, just really, the, the people who spoke were amazing, the singers who sung were amazing, and the support that the students showed for each other, showed for the teachers, and teachers showed for the students. It was just very heartwarming, and was an amazing event.
Tom?
I'd just like to commend the middle school jazz band that performed at Music Hall. I thought that was the most stunning performance. There's, there's the afterglow I felt for days after that, just to think that, that jazz band of over 100 musicians and Dave Irvin, it was just, just a miracle.
Anybody else? We have no discussion items?
None.
Committee updates? We're doing good.
Ken, yes.
Wellness committee had their last meeting before the fall, and I just talked about the agendas that we're setting up for the fall and the issues that we'll cover.
Great, thank you.
Sustainability committee has had a lot of good turnout as far as applicants for the Green Team leaders, and they're going to be interviewed and selected, so let's proceed.
Anybody else? Motion to approve the minutes of 6:5, 2013. Al?
Make a motion to approve the minutes for 6:513.
Second by Kenny. I did have some slight adjustments to the minutes, the motions. Any other discussion? Yes?
Yeah, on page seven, first paragraph, Laura, the policy, it's the handbook policy. So, the first sentence is this policy, it should, could say either what the policy identification is, or could say the handbook policy.
You'd like to say this, the handbook policy?
The handbook policy, thank you.
Laura, you should put both in, put the code in as well as the title.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Could I have a show of hands then, as amended? Seven in the affirmative, motion carries. And now we go to public comment.
Hello, Denise Day Durham. Just two comments. First of all, regarding how other districts, poorer districts pay for all-day kindergarten or support for all-day kindergarten, and the answer is, they have larger class sizes. Someone I know is a kindergarten teacher in one local district, and she has 24 children in her kindergarten class. So, my guess is if you went back to those parents and said, would you, if the trade-off was having all-day kindergarten but having 24 children in the class compared to, I think it's probably 15, 16 currently, that might make a big difference. So, that's, that's, anyway, that's one answer. I don't think it's a trade-off that we wanna make. Secondly, a comment was made about, we waited many years for theater, and I, I wanna say that my former neighbor, Richard Tappin, was a longtime English teacher here in the district, Maria's smiling, and produced many, many wonderful plays. And the one that really stands out in my mind was an original play that he and Dave Irvin wrote to commemorate the anniversary of the school district, and I don't remember which anniversary it was, but it was a stunning play and included children all the way up from elementary school to middle school to high school. And it had the word river in it, but that's all I can remember. But, so, no, I mean, it, it's true that we've had a theater teacher teaching it as a course here in school for only a few years, but theater has very much been part of the Oyster River tradition for a lot of years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dean, remind Lee, I'm back. I, I also was at the art, the Massway Art Show, which was great, and it was also the Lee Agriculture Treasures or her something, and I wanna do a special shout-out to Bill and Bob, these two oxen that my kids really had a good time with. You know, Kathleen and Alexander do a great job getting these meetings out, and boy, all that stuff they produce is just great. And I will point out that at the Friday expression session at Massway, there was a second grader who produced the video. And it was pretty short, but it was very impressive. And these, you know, the technology is such that these, the kids can actually do this now, and so it's, it's great that they'll have the opportunity. And now we'll have, I think we can at least have Al on for an hour, maybe two a week. He deserves his own show. I wanted to make one point about the- I wanted to make one point about the, about the tuition for all-day kindergarten and what not having it means. And it's basically, what not having it means is we're going to take a lot of local daycares around here, CSDC, I don't know, Live and Learn, whoever else, does essentially function as kindergarten for people who need daycare, and we're going to, you know, take a lot of money out of their pockets to provide all-day kindergarten to our kids, which, I mean, I think it's great, but on the other hand, I don't think it's that great an idea that the taxpayers are essentially, you know, taking money from local businesses. And I would prefer to avoid that. And that's all I really wanted to say about that.
Do we have the agenda item list? No.
It's done. That's previous work, we should take that off.
We should. So the next meeting will be on the 10th of July? Hope to see you all there? No?
It is a regular meeting of the board on the 10th.
For manifest?
For Manista, for manifest.
Only?
Yes.
Yep. So that 30-minute period?
Yep. And then the 17th is a regular meeting.
And on the 17th, we have our long meeting.
So only the manifest committee needs to really be in attendance.
I need a manifest sub.
You have to find a sub.
Do you know Ed's number?
Or Ed, could you sub?
You know, I didn't bring my book here, July 10th. I think, yeah, put me down, pencil me in.
We need no non-public sessions, so I'll accept...
Are we going to talk about agendas?
Huh? Agenda planning?
Yeah.
We did, we have that whole list that we're working on.
What if we have something new that we never thought of before until, like, three days ago? No?
Well, mention it.
I'd like to talk about, or get more information about the feasibility of bringing in New Hampshire Southern, oh, name of the school. New Hampshire Southern University to teach college-level courses at Oyster River High My understanding is that Portsmouth, Exeter, Dover, Concord, a number of high schools in the state are doing this. It costs $100 per pupil for a course.
Yeah, just so you know, Megan, as recently as today, we were in conversations with a branch of the university that's willing to do that for us, so.
A branch of this New Hampshire Southern?
It's not Southern, it was Plymouth State. They came in today and talked to us about this very issue.
Okay, so maybe giving us an update on that?
We will do that, absolutely.
The opportunities, the vistas that will open for our students.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Now can I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Made by Al, seconded by Ann. And on a unanimous head rate, we're adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.